Guys, I'm in a meeting.
Okay. Welcome.
Tony S.
Sorry about that.
Uh, I'm here.
Okay, and Larry? And Simona? Tony, stand there, Ron. Uh, tonight's meeting has convened, been convened in accordance with the governor's executive order, uh, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. And according with this executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view, participate in tonight's meeting via computer, smartphone, telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal obligation, our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the doors of the town hall as the town's bulletin board is within the building. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media and then have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. For those of you unfamiliar with the proceedings and rules of the zoning board of appeals, uh, we take each application, uh, the person, the applicant will describe what they want to do, uh, they'll have an opportunity to speak. We ask that all testimony is under oath, um, we'll take comments, or we'll take questions from any of the members of the board. The public is welcome to make comments, um, as they see, as, as, on the application. Um, as, as we get through each of the applicants, there's, and close the public hearing on each of those, uh, there's a deliberation period where there's no further comment or, or evidence taken, and we'll discuss each one and make a decision. You can either wait for the end of deliberation to find out whether your application has been approved, or you can check with the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay? With that...
I just want to point out, Simona has joined as well.
Oh, good. How about Larry?
No, still don't see Larry.
Okay. Then, uh, under old business, we have, uh, item number one, Vassar College. There's a request to have that adjourned to the July 12th, 2021 meeting. I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item two, Stewart Shop. Again, there's a request by the applicant to have that adjourned until the January 12th, 2021 meeting. I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
You said January.
Oh, well, then July, then.
Sorry.
All right, with that modification, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Then that motion carries. Item three has been withdrawn. That brings us to new business, number four, uh, 990 Duchess Turnpike. Is there someone here from that application? Come on up here. So if you could, uh, just speaking, yeah, speaking to the microphone, thank you. State your name, and then you'll be sworn.
Deborah Miller-Liley. Mister, Miss, Ms. Miller-Liley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Okay, I'm seeking a variance for an extension for a, uh, porch that has, already has a variance from February, and it connects two porches together. So I need a variance, um, of six point four, porch is six point four, and I need a variance because it doesn't meet the 20-foot property line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does, um, uh, this addition, does that extend any closer to the side lot line than exists?
No, it only extends from the existing porch to the front porch.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
More questions.
Art?
This is the addition that, uh, the adjoining unit has stood there already, right?
Yes, there's the front porch, and then there was the side porch that has the variance from February, and we just connected them, extended that one so the other one would connect.
Okay, thank you. Tony D., do you have any questions?
No questions.
Phyllis, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Um, and Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, anyone from the audience or the Zooming public that wants to comment on this application?
If you're on the Zoom, you can raise your hand, uh, or just unmute yourself and speak. I don't think anyone's on a phone, but if you were, you could use star six to unmute yourself. Not seeing any.
All right, seeing none, make a motion to close the public hearings.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You gonna, you gonna wait through the whole thing or find out tomorrow?
I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay, all right. And so the record's clear, which Larry's not here, right? So that makes Tony S. a voting member?
Correct.
Okay.
Either Tony or Simona, depending on how you want to...
Okay. Next is item number five, 22 Darrell Place. Is there someone here for that application?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Ms. Carter, would you identify?
Hi.
Ms. Carter, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Um, I'm seeking a variance for, um, pool deck. It's, um, I guess not within code to the property line of my neighbors. So I'm trying to get a variance for that.
All right, so, um, let me ask you this, when did the pool go in?
Um, last year.
Okay, and then when did, was, when was the deck built?
Um, last month.
Was there a building permit for the deck?
No, the contractor told me that it wasn't attached to the house, so I didn't need one.
Okay.
Which I found out by calling and finding out that that was not true.
So how, how did, exactly did you find out?
Um, because when my electrician came to do the work for the pool, he had asked me about the deck, and he said that, you know, you're gonna need a, um, permit for that. And I said, "Well, I don't." He said, "I don't, I don't." He used to tell me I didn't have, my contractor said I didn't have to, and the electrician said I would have to. So that's when I called the town and cleared it up.
Okay. How was it decided that the deck would be oriented that way?
Um, by the contractor. He said because of the sun would hit that part of the, um, the, um, deck.
Could you say that again? I didn't...
That, he said the sun. Um, I wanted it behind the pool, but he said there would be no sun, and it would be better on that side. So I went with it.
Okay, so if you had put it either into the back or the front facing of the, of the pool, you wouldn't need a, a variance?
I don't think so, no, because it would, it, it would be within the, I think it's the, uh, is it 15 feet? Is the, uh, property line, uh, for the variance?
And do you know about how far away the house itself is from the side lot line?
The neighbor's house or my house?
Your, your house, from your, from your property line on the side of the house.
I want to say it's probably, uh, 50 feet maybe?
Okay.
Yeah.
Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I do not.
Okay. Art, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Tony S., yeah, no questions.
Tony, Tony D. has no questions.
Neither of us do, actually.
All right, is there anyone from the audience or from Zoom that wants to comment on this application?
Not seeing anyone on the Zoom who's trying to raise their hand or trying to unmute.
All right, not seeing a hearing on, I'll move to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Then that carries. Uh, this brings us to item number six, 10 Colburn Drive. Is there someone here for that application?
Hello?
That's Graham Hardy?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hardy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, do you want to describe your application?
I'm seeking a variance to install a six-foot privacy fence from my neighbor's property line along my property line, along the Andrea side of my property. As it is a corner lot, um, I require the variance because it's going to be a six-foot fence on what is per code technically my front yard to provide some privacy to my backyard.
Okay, and about how long would, would the fence be?
Uh, approximately 50 feet.
If we were to grant that for a 50-foot fence, would that satisfy what you want?
Yes.
Okay. And is it fair to say that there's a lot of vegetation in that, in the back lot, in the back part of your lot?
Yes.
And is it also fair to say that somewhere between, around the middle of the lot on the Andrea side, there's a big mound that's with some other, like, gardening stuff there?
There is, there's a, a hill that the fence would then go up to.
Okay.
Well, not, not up on top of, just up to the hill.
Okay. All right, then those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No, that answered my question. No, no questions, thanks.
Art?
You covered them all, thank you.
Tony D.?
Tony D. has no questions.
Okay. Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
I'm good. No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
And Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
All right, is there anyone from the public, from the audience or from the Zoom public who wishes to comment on this application? Again, not seeing anyone. All right. Not seeing anything, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number seven, 2381 New Hackensack Road. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, uh, I'm Lloyd Wright from Poughkeepsie United Methodist Church.
How do you do, sir?
Mr. Wright, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Yes, so we would like to, to get a variance to install an electronic, uh, display inside our existing sign for the church.
And what would be the purpose of, of that?
So it is for us to, uh, make announcements for public events, such as we have free dinners on Wed, last Wednesday of the month, things like that. Right now, we've been wheeling out a little portable sign out to the road, and we'd like to stop doing that.
So right now, there's the, there are, there's a, what appears to be a temporary sign about a daycare or some other event on the front? Would that...
We have a, we have a nursery school in there.
A nursery school, okay. Would that remain or would this take care of that?
Uh, we would like to remain keeping that, and I believe that, that sign is under 15 square feet, but we would like to keep that.
And, um, you understand that there are some limitations about electronic signs, about how often you can change them?
Yes.
And the lighting, when they can be on? Okay.
I know that, that we can change it, well, twice per day, I believe.
I, I thought it was once a day, but...
Every 24 hours, right?
Is it 24? Okay. I don't think we would agree...
But that, you know, that's subject to, we can look at it.
We would meet that requirement then.
In addition to your application, uh, you also indicate, for the EMD, you also indicate that you're gonna move the name and address of the church to the top of the, of the monument sign, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I, I think that, um, you're gonna need to resubmit an application for that?
Okay.
There was a county response to the first application, to this application, finding a, a matter of local concern, um, but we're gonna have to resubmit to the county with a new application. So I don't, I don't think we're gonna be able to act on your application tonight.
Okay, would we need to have an application just for the second piece, or is it the combined one?
I would suggest, I think, doing the whole thing together, but Lisa?
Right, um, it, it should be an application that covers both parts of the sign, so we should have the total overall dimensions of the sign, and then what percentage of design or what the dimensions are for the EMD portion as well.
Okay, that makes sense.
We haven't, that, Chrissy says it was submitted this, today, so... Do we have a, a rendering of that at this time, or do we just have...
I, I have one that if you can, if I can share my screen, I could.
There's a picture in the packet, right?
Yes, it's, that top piece is, is one and a half by eight. So it matches what's in the packet, if that's not changing, we're just adding the dimensions? Yes. Okay.
Yes.
So how much time do we need for the county to respond so that we can act on the application?
Well, arguably, we didn't notice the application for the correct number of square feet for the variance, because if the sign is adding an additional nine square feet, we need to renotice it as well. So we have to comply with the legal publication notices for the newspaper also.
Right, so is that a two-month adjournment or...
No, it should be just a one month. Since the county's already reviewed it, they should review within the same 30 days. So we can send it along with the notation that this is also part of it. So I don't think we need a two-month extension.
So then, that would be my suggestion, uh, that we adjourn. But before we do that, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, you know, if there's any questions, I'll answer any other questions about it.
Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No, you covered the, how many times a day it can change.
Uh, Tony D.?
So is that, I, could you repeat the question?
I, I'm asking if Tony D. has any questions.
Oh, okay.
Tony is frozen, I think. I bet I'm gonna skip Tony D.
Yeah, I, I do, I do have a question. In our packet...
Tony, you're not coming through.
Who would you like to speak?
Tony D., you can, you can ask a question, but just, it's, you're being broken up, it's breaking up.
Where is... But, but again, we have to react to...
Tony S. or Tony B.?
D.
Tony D. Did he disappear?
He did.
All right, we're gonna, I'm gonna skip Tony D. Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No question.
Simona?
No questions.
Okay.
Tony, Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
Now Tony D.
In my packet, it shows the, I think, existing monument-style sign with kind of a superimposed, uh, electronic, um, you know, sign inside of it. And then it also shows the Poughkeepsie United Methodist Church, you know, addition onto the top. And then it shows a seven-foot by three-foot measurement. Is that including the addition of Poughkeepsie United Methodist Church with the 2361 address label?
No, it is just, that, that three by seven foot, 21 square feet is just the electronic sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
If you're on a Zoom call, you can raise your hand using that feature on Zoom, or just unmute yourself.
Can I ask one? I, I, I have a question now, can I ask one? If no one's speaking up?
Sure, go ahead, Diane.
Sure.
Um, just, what, you said you'd like to keep the second sign for any particular reason, I mean...
Well, the, the nursery school is actually somewhat separate from our church, and they'd like to keep their own sign.
So it's just their sign? It doesn't, doesn't it also have the Methodist Church sign on it, or...
No, no, it just, it says Community Nursery School, it's just the nursery school.
Just community, okay.
So what's the relationship between the church and the nursery school?
The nursery school is under our 501(c)(3) corporate, uh, umbrella, but it, it operates with different people, but it's under our corporate umbrella.
And those signs, those signs for the nursery school, are they temporary or permanent or...
Uh, I guess, I guess you can say they're temporary. I mean, uh, that they do get changed out every now and then.
So we need to have, since I think this is the first time our zoning administrator is hearing about that sign, we need to have, um, her make a determination about whether that sign is also, would be considered an exempt sign, or would be considered some other type of sign under the packet, under the zoning code? So yeah, if you could send me that information at your earliest convenience, that would be great.
Yep, I can do that.
All right, and if no one else has any other questions, I would make a motion to adjourn this to the July 12th.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, uh, did we get an answer on how often the sign can change?
We can determine that in the interim.
Okay.
We'll have it as part of for next month.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn to July 12th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that carries.
All right, thank you.
That brings us to, uh, item, item number eight, 16 Mahar Drive. Is there someone here for that application?
If you, uh, are muted, but you're trying to speak to this application, please unmute yourself.
All right, I'll put that on a second call. That'll bring us to item number nine, 49 Hagan Drive. Is there someone here for that application?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Sure, do you want to describe your application?
Yeah, I'm, uh, looking for a variance to build a deck off the back of my house, which ends up being too close to the front property line when you attach to the back corner of the, the house, which is only 26 feet from the front property line.
All right, and so you, you provided a diagram. Is, is it fair to say... Well, is it fair to say that the addition, the proposed addition gets no closer to the front line than the existing house?
That's correct.
Okay. And in fact, it kind of angles away from the front line?
Yes.
Okay. Then those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony D.?
No questions.
Uh, Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, hearing and seeing nothing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number 10, 10 Cardinal Drive. Is there someone here for that application? Come on up. Can I switch this one? Or is it both? Hi, why don't you state your names?
Gerald A. DeMarco.
Make sure you're speaking to the microphone so we get a clear recording. Gerald A. DeMarco.
Donald Lee DeMarco. Mr. and Mrs. DeMarco, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Our family would like to seek a variance to move, uh, current fence to, uh, I guess a variance of six foot and two feet and six inches on the side of our property.
Okay, so this is for a fence that exists?
Yes. And we're actually just moving it to allow for more privacy and more backyard space.
All right, so your property is, um, considered to have two front yards because it's on a corner.
Correct.
You did, I note in the application that you had a, um, fence permit?
Yes.
And did you, and did you indicate where you were gonna build the fence on that permit?
Yes, we did. And, and they recommended six foot at the time, I believe.
No, they said they didn't, it didn't matter what size it was, it could've went to six, eight. And we filled out everything, we brought in the, uh, survey of the property and everything. And they just said that, somebody did a drive by and it...
Was the fence built, uh, yeah, according to the, to the fence permit? Was it put in the same location?
That's the way we put it in, put the application in.
So, let me take a look at the application. So there existed a fence along that lot line previously, right?
Correct, just more in.
Right, and so were you replacing that, or you wanted to move?
We just extended that border. So we're just saying, high fence, just moved it out.
A lot more.
There's no way to, for us to share documents with, uh, app, well, let me, let me ask you this, if one of you would come up, I have what looks to be your, um... And there's, um, a line in red and blue with a fence?
Yes.
Does this fairly...
Proportionate to, I guess, to where it is, that would be basically for the old ones and then moving the cul-de-sac.
So does this fairly and accurately represent the application you made for your fence permit?
I would say it's not proportionate. I think it was a little...
That's, that's not my, my, does it indicate where you, where you applied, is this, does this represent your, your fence permit?
Yes.
Okay, so this indicates...
But I don't think dimensionally that is correct.
Well, it's certainly not where the fence is now. But my question, listen very carefully to my question, if you would. When you made your fence permit application, did you, did you submit this along with your fence permit application? Indicating where you were gonna put the fence?
Yes.
Okay, and it's fair to say that that's not where the fence is?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then that's, you can go back to your seat. How high was the old fence?
Six feet.
Okay. And that had existed for quite some time, right?
Yes, I can't remember how long ago it was.
And can you describe how you just decided that you wanted to move it closer to the road?
Right, so during the course of events of the last 12 months, we wanted to expand the backyard, we no longer use the cul-de-sac and the, the families to gather. So to get more space in the backyard for the animals in our family, we wanted to move that over. And the actual, where the fence ended up is because of the way the tree lines are at an angle, and it's either in front of it all the way over, or right after the tree line as far as we could get without cutting down those trees. So my wife did not want to cut down any of her trees that have been there for her whole So my wife did not want to cut down any of her trees that have been there for her whole life. So they went just on the opposite side of those tree lines. And that's where, the front part is exactly where the old fence line went, on the outside of the windows there. So it just, we actually just bumped out the side to gain more usable space for the backyard for the animals and the family.
It was like dead space. It was like dead space. So instead of having such a small backyard, we wanted to extend the side yard to, we didn't use it. It was dead space.
And when did you decide to do that, before or after you made the application?
Oh, no, this was, we started this at last year when we couldn't.
I want you to listen carefully to my question. I want you to wait till I ask the question before you answer it. When did you decide to move the fence, before or after you made the fence application?
No, we made the application.
And then you decided to move it?
And when we got the permit, that's when we moved it. And, you know, I mean.
Wait, 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 go ahead. I want to be clear about your answer. You made, you made the application for a fence permit. And then you, then you put it in a different spot.
We filled it out wrong.
Yes.
We filled it out wrong.
She filled out this sketch wrong. So she, the intention was to move the fence, right?
Right where it is.
Right where it was. That it was always on the opposite side of the tree. And when she did the sketch on the opposite side, she just shortened, the length of the fence is the same and the width is the same. She just sketched out the drawing wrong on the side of the property. It's still the same dimensional fence that they intended to put up. Her sketch was wrong. It's always been a six-foot high fence. But we didn't realize that that's if you, where her measurements were.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. A three-and-a-half-foot fence would be permitted in the area where you have the fence now.
Right.
Would that in any way satisfy what you want to do with the fence?
So that would not enable us to keep the dog and everything else back there. So that would not give the privacy she needs for the backyard.
Okay, that's all I have. Christine?
How much farther out was your fence moved from where it was before to where it is now?
I think it's like where it was before.
Can you talk into the mic?
I have a printout from Parcel Access that shows the, the old fence. I can pass that.
I mean, we moved it off quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
I would just ask, had that.
We tried to include as much as possible into the package. And the neighbors are very similar to their fences. And we got them to, you know, we asked them if they had any objections or any concerns. And we included those signatures and documents inside of the package.
Tony D. I'm sorry, did you have any questions?
No questions.
They don't seem to know how far they moved it. So what are we looking at, 20, 25 feet?
Based upon the diagram that they've provided, it's like 30 some feet closer. How far away?
Right.
How much?
26.
26 feet? According to the survey that's provided in their packet.
But here in the packet, it shows pretty much where it is now.
Right, but there's a, there's another one that shows the old, the old fence.
The original application wasn't provided in the packet. It should have been, but it wasn't.
So we won't find that in your packet. Question?
She had attached that the old.
Are we better off asking, are we better off asking them to resubmit rather than turn them down tonight if that would be, if that be the case?
No, they're asking for a variance because they have a six-foot fence in the front yard. The old fence.
Would not have been in the front yard.
I think it was far enough away from the front lot line that it, it was, six-foot fence would have been okay.
Gotcha.
Tony D.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
And Tony S.
Just for clarification only, how, how far was the fence moved from what was applied for in the fence permit?
It looks like about 26 feet according to the diagram.
26 feet toward Peacock Lane?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Hello?
Ms. Jones, do you want to comment on this application?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, what we would like to do is we are applying for six.
Wait, wait, hang on just a second. We're still, we're still on item number 10. Does anyone want to comment on item number 10?
Sorry, sorry.
That's all right.
Again, if you're wishing to comment on item number 10, you can unmute yourself, raise your hand in Zoom if you'd like. No, not seeing anyone.
Diane, you're lit up.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to pull up the, the April papers. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay. Not hearing or seeing any response, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to number 11, 1 Diane Court. Is there somebody from here for that application?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Joneses.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Jones, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, what's your application?
What we were looking to do is we were applying for a six-foot fence, a variance to connect from our, the existing fence, our neighbor's fence in the back of our property line, alongside our property line up Taft into our, the edge of our deck.
Okay, and tell us why a three-and-a-half-foot fence, which would be authorized under the code, is, would be insufficient for your, what you want to do?
Well, three-foot would be insufficient, that we believe. We have a lot of strangers walking all hours of the day, especially at night, up and down Taft. We have small kids. And we would like a six-foot fence for added security and protection for, for my family.
Yes, and also our bikes got stolen in the back of the house. And then also our neighbors told us to make sure we keep our cars locked at night because their cars were ramsacked. And also for added protection against loud noises. That's why we would like the fence to be higher than the three feet.
Okay, you talk about noise on that Taft Avenue side?
Yes.
And again, this is a front yard simply because you're on a corner lot, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
There are a number of trees along, along the Taft Avenue line.
Yes.
What do you intend to do with those?
Well, our contractor may have mentioned that some of the trees are, are dead and they do need to cut, they do need to come down. So we were also looking to get rid of, eliminate the trees that are dead. But we want to keep some for added, added protection because the Taft is very busy. And it is also could serve as an added protection along with the fence as well.
Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
So would the fence be inside, you know, closer to the house? In other words, the trees are along Taft Avenue, would the fence be inside that toward your house?
That's a good question. We was going to consult with the, with the contractor about that. I'm thinking maybe on the outside of, of the trees, but I think outside would be, would be sufficient for what we are looking to do.
Yes.
As opposed to being inside. If the fence was inside, it would eliminate some, it would eliminate space.
Okay, thank you.
Tony D.
I don't remember taking exact measurements from the center of the road, but I would just advise Mr. and Mrs. Jones that if they're going to put the fence on the outside of the trees towards Taft, that, that doesn't create another problem for you. You make sure that that still falls within the, the clearance areas so you don't need to come back before us again.
Yes, sir, just noted.
Okay, Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
I'm sorry, Simona?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
All right, any from the, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
And if you're on the Zoom, just raise your hand or unmute yourself.
All right, seeing or hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any, are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to number 12, 11 Clifftale Court.
Hey, hello. My name is Ian Rieger. I'm representing in that case, this case.
Mr. Rieger, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I want you to describe this application.
Hey, we need, we started building a house on this lot. And it turns out that after further review, we needed an area variance because of a sideline. Little background that, the lot is challenging, has some, a lot of slope and rock. And we made some adjustments to the footprint where the house would go to try to have something that would be easier to build, more desirable to live on. So we, we made the adjustments, we submitted for a building permit. All the paperwork was approved, we have a building permit. And we started construction in this revised location. When I was looking at the subdivision map for another matter, I realized that in addition to setbacks, the normal lot line setbacks, that because this is a cluster subdivision, there was an additional setback that, that didn't, that was in conflict to where we had relocated the house. So upon noticing that, we stopped construction. We have a footing in there now. We stopped construction and we called the building department, the zoning department. And we met out there and we came upon this course of action to come to this board and to ask for relief. We are too close to a property line according to the, the cluster rulings, but fortunately, there are no homes in that immediate area. There is woods and we have quite a bit of distance between the church and, and another house that's on Spackenkill Road.
Okay, before we, before we ask any questions, there was a, a comment from a neighbor. I'm going to read, read that unless Ms. Rue wants, wants to. I mean, I'll put it into the record unless Ms. Rue wants to comment at the appropriate time. If you just want to. Ms. Rue?
I am present, but I, I'm trying, my toddler's going to bed, so I am not able to really read out my letter. So if you could read that, that would be very helpful.
All right, then I'll go find it. Okay, this letter came from Ms. Rue. To whom may concern, my name is Amanda Rue, and I'm writing in regards to the request of a zoning variance for the property listed as 11 Clifford Court, the Kipsey, New York. I'm unable to attend the meeting due to having a young child at home with no eternal child care. I currently reside at 250 Spackenkill Road, the adjacent property to the above address. And our property is referenced in the application by Rieger Homes, Inc. My husband Dan and I have concerns regarding the approval of this variance by the town board. In response to the applicant's answer to the question of whether undesirable change or detriment will be created by granting this variance, they state that there will be no impact on the single-family home more than approximately 300 feet away in the Faith Assembly of God church. Our concern is twofold. One, according to scale on survey maps, our home is closer to 200 feet from the property corner involved. The topography of the applicant's land is 10 to 15 feet higher in elevation. And we are concerned that the close placement of the home and even closer placement of the tile field septic system will create a watershed effect on our property, which already contains a swale to handle water from the protected wetlands directly south of both properties. It's also noted that the current owner of the church to the east is no longer Faith Assembly of God. The current owners are.
Hoppers.
El Maser de la Esperanza. The other segment of the application that is in question is whether this is a self-created difficulty. It's acknowledged that this particular parcel, parcel is difficult due to topography, relation to wetlands and bedrock. What we would like to understand is why the building permit was issued when paperwork filed in this county in 2009 clearly shows the required 75-foot ordinance and the undesirable building situation that this plot contains. Before purchasing our own property in 2019, we looked into the vacant subdivision cluster and quickly filed a 15-page document with copious detail of the plans for the property. Seeing the planned location of the future and potential houses assured us that building would not be encroaching on our property. Filed map 12263, found on the Duchess Partial Mapping System, shows the house plans beyond the 75-foot buffer from our property. This information was a factor in our choosing to purchase our home. Two excerpts of this document are provided below with the highlights of the 75-foot setback and the undesirable building area due to greater than 25% grade of the land. We feel that reducing the setback requirements by 60% to 23 feet is excessive. Please see images provided below for reference. We do not understand how we could easily find this information, but it was overlooked in the, in the early stages of the recent development. We ask that you consider our concerns and objections when you deliberate on providing this variance. Thank you. Signed, Amanda M. Rue, owner, 250 Spackenkill Road. And that will be made part of the record. Do you want to comment on, on any part of that? Some portions of, of those issues are not before us. Solely before us is just the variance for the setback requirement. So the issue about the wetlands and the septic system, I don't believe are before us other than perhaps our consideration about whether, whether the side lot variance has any impact with that. But is there anything that you want to comment in regard to that, those comments?
So I'm, I have a little difficulty hearing, so I can comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
You're asking for a comment? Okay, so the septic is, is not changing. The septic is located exactly where it would have been, no matter where the house was built. So that's, that's not impacted by the shifting of the house.
Okay, and how about the distance from the, the corner of the house that you're building to the property at 250 Spackenkill?
We are, we are definitely closer to the property line.
Right, so I just want to.
Than the host's.
I just want to know the distance from the house, your house, the house you're building, that corner to the neighbor's house. She says it's less than 200 feet, you said it's 300 feet. Do you have an idea?
I don't know how, I don't know the distance. I just know the distance from that corner of our house to the property line, that's 23 feet.
Okay, how about what you described as the change in elevation? The difference in elevation between your property and her property?
Well, I'm having difficulty understanding what that impact is, how that might be a detriment to the, the other parcel.
I just want to understand if it's accurate.
What do you mean?
I just want to understand if that's accurate. She states that there's a difference in elevation between your property and her property that, that she's concerned about. I just want to know if that's accurate.
I don't know. I haven't noticed any huge difference. There may be some, some difference. I can't, I don't think that's going to impact drainage in any way. I don't know, I don't, I'm trying to figure out the relevance, I don't understand. I did meet with, um, some of the, uh, officials in the zoning department, and they did take a look at it. Maybe they can give shed a little light or give you a little background. But, um, offhand, I don't know. I don't. The house is far enough away. I don't, I can't, sitting in my home, I can't judge. I can't really comment on the difference in elevation.
Okay. For the record, we described the rock outcropping to the, to the side of the foundation?
Yes. So, so on the side of the current location, the, uh, the slope is quite a, a steep hill, and there's basically, uh, rock outcropping sticking through. We know where we excavated the house, we, um, we, we had to deal with rock, and as you go up the hill, it's even, uh, it's even more evident.
Okay. Um, that's all I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
Well, I've got the same questions you have, the, the elevation difference. And when we were there, it's obvious that that plot is higher than the existing house that the neighbor has the concern about.
It's obvious, which, which way? I thought that actually the neighbor's house was higher than the foundation.
It looked...
No.
No, I don't believe it. I think if you go there, I think you're actually looking down into the neighbor's yard. It, it almost looks like, I don't know about lining it, but it almost looks like the, uh, gentleman was not, the gentleman was not prepared to answer our question, so maybe we should adjourn this until he has better information for us? Because he didn't really answer your questions.
Yeah, I, I would like to be able to address each of the, the neighbor's concerns. Would you be able to provide that information? So, I think particularly, actually, the actual distance between the two buildings and the topography between the two properties?
I can, so, I can look into it and get you that information.
Okay. That, I think that would be helpful.
So specifically, you want to know the distance from
From the building-
this proposed house to the corner of, uh, the Rue's house?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the difference in height between...
From house to house?
Correct.
Not so much property to property from, from house to house? Okay.
Will you be able to provide a topographic map of the two properties? We can see them.
I mean, I have topo on our property. I don't know if I have topo, how, how far the topo goes off the property.
I can just chime in very quickly. Um, I believe, uh, the excerpt of the map that I did did have the elevations on there. Our property is about, uh, 209, and the other one was 220 or 215. So, so it's a matter of 10 or 15 feet, but I thought that the topographical issue of our, the backyard is listed either in the paperwork that's on parcel access or the, the clipping that I did take. So that should be easy enough to find.
Okay, I just have an excerpt of the, um, of the topo, and it has some on the other properties, so I may be able to, I should be able to get you that information.
Okay. Anything else, all right?
No, I think that would help a lot.
Okay. Tony D.?
Yes.
Any questions?
Asked and answered.
Phyllis? Phyllis, I think you're muted.
Sorry. There's a, there's a pipe that kind of looks like it goes nowhere near the rock crop, the rock outcropping. What was that about? I mean, it's sticking right out of the dirt mound.
Yeah, it's right near a, a marker. A vertical marker, a wooden stake with a pink ribbon on it for the applicant.
No, it doesn't, uh, I think it's a non-functional thing, probably leftover something else.
Okay.
And then, if I could ask, the top of that property is significantly higher than the house, is significantly higher than the property on Spackenkill Road. Is there a plan to manage rainwater or anything with that?
Well, yes, we will, um, we will have swales around the house to, uh, lead the water away from the foundation. That's a typical, uh, building procedure.
Okay, and, and-
And we have footing drains around, we have footing drains around the house for anything that gets to the house.
And will there be swales to mitigate the water between properties as well?
Well, the water will, um, from a little topo I have, um, everything is gonna drain towards Spackenkill. We have, uh, there's a covert pipe under the entrance of, of the road. And, um, everything, um, well, we had sheet flow down that way. There's, I don't think there's gonna be a big concentration of water. It's gonna, it's gonna sheet flow rather than point flow.
Okay, okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Would it be feasible, as we've done in the past, for the builder, the contractors, et cetera, to meet us at the site, so we can discuss these questions with answers in real time as we go? We've done it in the past with builders.
Yeah, so, so the question is whether we could meet with whomever, the engineer or the contractor, whomever is most knowledgeable about the plan to, to meet with us, to, you know, to discuss these questions.
And possibly the existing homeowner, if we wanted to get permission to go on her property, so that would be feasible?
Um, you have permission to go on my property. Tomorrow's my last day of school, so I will be available as you need me.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, one other thing that the board might want to consider is that the ZBA might find the benefit from having the towns either engineer or someone from the building department take a look at this, because I'm guessing swell and drainage issues are outside the expertise of the ZBA. And even if you meet on-site with the applicant's engineer, they may, you might not have enough information in order to make your determination. Um, once we received a revised set of plans from Mr. Rieger, we could circulate those if the board were amenable to either the village engineer or the, the village, the town engineer, or someone in the building department and get their comments.
The town engineer was on-site with us when we, when we went out and looked at it, uh, along with the building inspector. And so they're, they're both very familiar with, with the plans. So they, they certainly could meet you out, out there. That would not be a problem.
Well, would it be a benefit just to have the town engineer meet up, meet with us? I mean, they understand what they're...
Um, we could, if you would rather do that.
If that's easier for the, I mean, I don't know.
It's not, it's not a problem for the engineer to be on-site.
Okay.
Yeah. As long as we just plan ahead and schedule the time, we can do that.
All right, is that, does that work for you?
By preference, just to have the builder there as well, or his engineers as well. Just because we've done in the past.
Okay.
And even though we have our own engineers, I think they, the builder has, may have more information.
All right, so would you be able to make some contact with the, um, I guess you or zoning?
Yeah, what do we go through?
Christine?
Oh, Christine, yeah.
With the zoning administrator to come up with a time that's convenient for everybody to meet on-site? And then we'll include the neighbor? All right? Anything else, all right?
No.
Okay.
I think I did enough. Sorry.
Phyllis, Phyllis, were you done? Did you have anything else?
You know, the other thing is I'm wondering what, um, the movement of this house's footprint is going to, if in any way it's going to impact the, um, layout of the rest of the development.
I, I think I would remind everybody that the issue before us is simply whether-
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. It's just the side yard variance.
Okay.
But I think those other things are, have a concern, but I think our, our jurisdiction is solely on the side yard variance. Diane, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I think if we're gonna meet there, that, that will take care of mine, probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Simona?
No questions for me.
Okay, and, uh, Tony S.?
Okay, I, I think that, uh, Art's concern and Lisa's, uh, suggestion, uh, take care of everything I've thought of.
Okay. All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Anyone else, uh, other than, Ms. Rue?
All right, hearing nothing, then I'll make a motion to adjourn this to July 12th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Uh, that brings us back to item number eight, 16 Mahar Drive. Is there anyone here from that application?
Yes, Simon McGammas, present.
So do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, I want you to describe your application.
Uh, seeking a variance to widen my, uh, left side of the driveway. It'll end six feet from the property line and 15 feet from the road. Um, I had called the town and highway, they said it was acceptable, but I didn't know I had to, they, they should, they should have directed me to the, um, the variance or the board, zoning board. In any case, um, I don't have any frontage in, in my, uh, property, or I got one space which is in front of a mailbox, and I don't want to block that. I have tenants in my, uh, home, and they need the space. I don't want them, uh, parking on the, on the street annoying any of my neighbors. So this is why I'm seeking to widen the driveway.
All right, and when did you make the addition?
Excuse me?
When did you add the pavement?
I did it last year, probably around July? No, um, I think it was more like September, September, uh, October. I was like the last, the last job for the guy for the year.
Okay, and how, how is it that you discovered that you were in violation?
I got a letter in the, uh, in the mail.
From zoning?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and how many tenants are there?
I have five kids in there, and, you know, they bring their guests. And, you know, I, I had them parking on, they were parking on the grass, so I put big rocks on my grass, so they don't park there. And I don't want them on the street.
Okay, the two-car garage, is that operable?
Yes.
Has a garage?
Yes.
Do, are they able to utilize that?
Well, they're using one as a gym, and the other one's got storage in it. So, not really.
So then, no, okay. All right, those are the questions I have at this time. Christine?
I don't have any questions.
All right.
I do have questions. Excuse me. If one of the garages has been used as a gym and the others used for storage, is there not a basement in that house?
No.
There's no basement, that's wherever?
Okay.
But even with that, you can still fit at least four, maybe five cars in the existing driveway without it being widened, and that is a town road that allows parking other than in the winter months. Um, I don't think, I don't think there's been a lot of complaints about on-street parking over there during the, the allowable season. So why do you have a concern about that? Why, why do you need the other spots? Because the other spots actually take away from the existing parking, if you will. Once you pull, what have you got? You got three, three, maybe four designated parking areas over there with your stripes?
It, it becomes a hassle. If they park on an angle, they're able to get out without bothering the other tenant to move their car, and you got more, more headache with cars being moved. Here, they can park on an angle, they can come out when they want to come out and, uh, you know, create a lot of havoc.
Well, we, you know, not to, not to be too objectionable, but we've heard, I have personally heard that reason a number of times for other, um, rental properties. I think, I don't think our, my goal as a zoning board member is to make it easier for student rentals versus the comfort and, and safety of the people that live there year-round. So that doesn't really make sense.
I just, I want to know-
This is a total rental property, correct?
Yes, I, I'd rather not have them parking on the street, their guests come. I mean, I don't want them parking in front of my neighbor's house. I mean, if it was your house, would you want people parking in front of your house?
Certainly. I live in the neighborhood, and I get people parking in front of my house all the time.
Well, I'm different. I respect, I respect my neighbors, and I try not to let them park in front of my, in front of my, in their houses.
This could get into a long discussion. Okay, thank you.
Um, Tony D.?
Can I just ask for a little clarification? What are, what are we looking at specifically here this evening? Because we identified a few things yesterday when we went on our field trip.
So it's an application, uh, for variance for the extended driveway. Personally, I think that he needs a variance to go from 15 feet to, to 35 feet, but the zoning administrator put it as just the, the, uh, variance from the existing 22-foot driveway to the, to the addition.
Overall 35 foot?
Right.
Okay. And, and this has nothing to do with whether it's 15 feet back from the road or not? This is just to be taken into consideration as a driveway itself?
No, it's not. It's just side parking and all.
No, I'm asking the, the chair.
Well, correct.
Paul?
It's the extension of the driveway.
Lee?
Can you get us closer to your mic? We can't hear you.
Right into the microphone.
Um, it's for the extension of the driveway. High, as per highway, they weren't allowed to go to the curb.
Yeah, so here's, I think Tony's question is simply, does it make a difference the fact that it's not the driveway at the beginning of the curb, but rather farther in? Does that make a difference to our analysis?
No.
Okay. Is that, did that answer, was that your question, Tony?
Okay, then, then I, well, yes, that was, and now I'll go back to Art. You know, considering the, uh, the landlord's concern about making it safe and making it more aesthetic for the neighbors and all, if there are six, it looks like there could easily be six cars in that driveway. If there are six cars in that driveway and those four additional angled, uh, parking spaces are needed.
Three.
Those, or those four were three. Uh, those four, it looks like we could get four, but forget it, three. It looks like those three people could not get out unless the, uh, uh, driveway was clear. And if the driveway was clear, there would be no need for the three additional angled spots, in my, in my estimation.
No.
And, and I would, and I would just think that those additional spots, based on the tenants that you have, would be, um, very temporary, uh, visitors to the location and not long-term, uh, parking effects on the neighborhood. Like Art, uh, I have many, myself included, park on the street occasionally, and so do my neighbors, but we restrict ourselves during the winter months when we're not permitted to do so. And there's ways around that. Those are my concerns.
Okay. Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No, no questions.
Uh, Simona?
No questions.
And Tony S.?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Come on up. A human.
Good evening.
State your name.
Uh, my name is Joanne Foley. Ms. Foley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? Yes.
What would you like to say?
I would like to say that I have, I own the house next door, to the left of the house.
Facing it, to the left?
Correct.
Okay.
This angled parking that Simon put in, of course, is a problem, because, first of all, the angle of the lights when these kids pull in and out, in and out, all night, shines right on the house, my house. So it's disturbing. So it's disturbing, not to mention the beeping of them coming in and out, locking the car, beep, 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 all night. So it, it's, it's a disturbance, and, uh, appearance-wise, it looks terrible to the neighborhood with, it looks like a parking lot. No one else has that in the whole street. I've owned that house thirty-three years. No one's done anything like this. It's an eyesore.
Tell me about, um, street parking. Is there sufficient street parking to accommodate additional cars?
Uh, I don't, there really isn't. I mean, I wouldn't say that there, there is, uh, you know, during the winter months, there isn't. There, there are small children on that street. Um, there's students now race in and out because the house is at the end, so they're, they're careless. Uh, you know, maybe if he widened it a little bit, so he could put two cars facing the house, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But, uh, not at this angle and not for this many cars. That's...
Okay. And, any, have any questions? Christine, you have any questions from the?
No, no questions.
Art, okay, again, I'm within neighborhood, neighborhood forty-five years, you know, a few blocks away. You asked about sufficient on-street parking. Um, I think, based on the time I've spent there and the time I've gone through that, because I, I know people that lived there. I think on the street, you probably get ten to fifteen cars easily around that area. So I think, again, I, I would have to say there's more than enough on-street parking for visitors, if that's the gentleman's concern.
Okay. Anyone else from the board that has any questions of, of the speak, of the speaker? Okay?
There's the yes call.
Yep. All right, A, do you have anything else to add? Okay, thank you, then you can come up. If you'd state your name.
Uh, my name is James Goring, G-O-R-I-N-G.
Mr. Goring, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what would you like to say?
Uh, I'd just like to clarify, uh, I believe Simon said that he had five students, uh, living there. Last semester, there were six. I'm not sure how many are there this year, they're in transition at this point, but, uh, last semester, there was Matt B., Matt A., Mark, Eamon, Brett, and Connor. I got to know all these guys pretty well.
You know, I, actually, I couldn't hear what you said. Did you repeat that?
The whole thing?
No, just the last part.
Oh, I named the guys. Mark, Mark, oh, excuse me, Matt, Matt, Mark, Eamon, Brett, and Connor. There were six guys there, and I got to know them all pretty well.
Oh, okay.
I know their names.
All right. And, so how many cars typically?
Uh, each one of those guys had a car, and then there were visitors.
Okay, so typically, what the parking, what the driveway look like? I mean, how many cars typically run the driveway?
At least six.
Okay.
And like the other people have said, you know, there's, there's a lot of young kids on the street, more and more every day, and then there's older people, so, uh, you know, we're concerned about the traffic and the speed.
All right, but in, in a relationship to the addition to the driveway, do you have concerns about that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, any? Any questions?
I'll be quiet, I'm done.
No, that's fine. Christine, anything?
No.
Okay, anyone else from the board that wants to question that speaker? Okay? Anyone else from the audience that wants to comment on this application?
Reminder, if you're on Zoom, you can also chime in with, uh, raising your hand or just unmuting.
All right, hearing nothing? Nothing, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Again, I will just make a motion for a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and deliberate on those applications.
And so we'll return at seven twenty-two.
All right, welcome back. We convene the town of Cape Cod Zoning Board of Appeals. We concur to item number, well, actually. Which one were?
Okay.
I can't tell who's, who's zoomed. I'm just gonna go through the, just, just in order, yeah. All right, so this, uh, this is about, uh, item number four. A new section to a side deck. You may recall that...
Are you watching the, uh, the video?
Yeah.
So folks that are at home, if you wouldn't mind keeping yourself muted, I'll do it for you too, but it's my life easier.
So you may recall that this was where you previously granted a variance for a side porch on this building that encroached upon the side lot line. This just connected the, that side porch to the front porch, really has no impact, no greater impact on the side lot line. Does anybody have any concerns about this one?
None.
Okay. Then I will offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. It consistent with, uh, the neighborhood, a variance was previously granted for the side yard setback for the deck walkway porch. This, um, addition has no further encroachment into the side lot line and should have no, um, no impact there. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon the position of the house next to the side lot line, there's no other method available to her to, to accomplish this. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but since it has no additional encroachment into the side lot line, um, it's really, it has no, it's not substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district, there are no physical or environmental impacts that I could see based upon this application. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, in the sense that, that's how the property's set up, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I will offer those findings. Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Not at all. Um, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one?
Who are you having vote?
Um, I think Larry, um, for this one. Uh, I'm sorry, Tony for this one, Tony S. for this one.
Okay.
So all those in fa, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is item number five, twenty-two Darrow Place. This is an application, um, for a variance for a deck for a swimming pool. She needs a seven-foot variance to, to allow, to make, uh, the, the deck legal. Any concerns about this one? The way, as she described it, um, really, the deck could have gone to the bu, behind the pool or in front of the pool and not required a variance. However, certainly in front of the pool would have taken up a significant portion of the backyard. And I think that based upon my recollection, where the deck is now, encroaching upon the side yard line, it's, it's no greater or very limited, not much greater than what the house is, so it's, there's really no real impact from, in, in my estimate. Does anybody?
Houses were pretty close together, so...
Yeah. Any, any concerns about anything? Okay, then I, then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The backyard is fenced, and so, um, there's really no impact, so long as the fence remains there, and I would offer that as a condition, if, if, assuming it is granted. Uh, but there's no impact on the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties based upon the backyard being fenced. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Uh, the deck was built based upon the positioning of the contractor. Had it been positioned someplace else, the applicant, uh, indicated that if it was placed in, behind, um, the pool, based upon the trees, that wouldn't receive any sun, and if it was placed in front of the pool, um, it would encroach upon the, and involve most of the backyard. Um, so this maximizes the usable rear, rear yard and is the only way to accommodate that. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, uh, but it's, it has little impact based upon the position of the primary residence. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there are no physical or environmental in, impact, uh, based upon this application. And whether, um, the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, um, but, uh, that's not a reason to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. All right, do you mind making a motion?
Excuse me. I move that board appro, approve the request for an area variance set forth on item, uh, five?
Six.
Five, sorry, five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts its findings, set forth in the chair, and I think that was just that the fence remained and existed.
Yeah, I, as a condition, I would say that they maintain that, that side lot, the fencing.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion on that one? And then, I guess we'll just alternate between Simona and, and Tony on voting. So, uh, any, anybody have any concerns about this one? Then, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. That brings us to item number six, ten Coburn Drive. This is a, uh, request to vary from the, um, a front yard fence, requiring a two-and-a-half-foot variance. I'm trying to remember which one this one is, okay. Oh, okay. All right, so, may recall, this is one, it's just a fence along, if there's two front yards. The fence is just along the back corner of their property, it's, it's partial. Um, assuming that this is authorized, I would just make a condition that it's only the fifty feet that the applicant requested and not go all the way, you know, to their whole property. Anyone have any concerns about this one? Then I, then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties uh, by the granting of the variance. Um, this is a front yard because it's a corner lot. Position of the fence has no impact on visibility, or, um, it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, will have no impact on nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon the topography of the site, there's no other feasible method to achieve the desired result. And whether the requested area variance is substantial. Uh, in the sense that fences are prohibited in front yards, yes, but due to the limited length of the fence and the fact that it's a corner lot, uh, and the position of the corner property, it, it's really not substantial. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there, there are no physical or environmental impacts from this application. And it is self-created in the sense that it's, it's a fence in the front yard, but that's not a reason to deny it. And I would offer those findings. And Tony D., do you mind making this motion?
Be pleased. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in a public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Um, I would ask that you add the condition that the fence is limited to fifty feet.
Okay, on this condition that the fence is limited to fifty feet, so move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this one? All right, then, um, all those in favor signify by aye, and if Tony S. wants to vote on this one?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Number seven was adjourned. Number seven was adjourned. That brings us to number eight. Yes. I'm gonna put number eight. All right, so this is a request for a 12-foot variance for a driveway that exceeds, well, exceeds the maximum allowed. Does anyone have any concern about this one?
You don't really wanna hear them again, do you?
Well, I want, when I make the findings, I wanna make sure that it's consistent with what everyone's concerns are.
Did you have something?
You go.
I have a third.
Hang on, we're arguing here. You go first. Have you had something?
No, no, not really. I mean, other than the fact that I was listening to the neighbor who said that, you know, the parking, the way the lights shine into her house as opposed to toward the house that's there. And also, the point was made, I think Tony made, that even if cars are parked there, if cars are parked there and there's other cars in the regular driveway, they're blocked in anyway, they have to move their cars around. So, I don't know that that's really a help, having that extra 12 feet there. That's all.
Go ahead. Okay. Starting from the beginning, this house has a two-car garage, one being a gym. Marist has a very large multimillion-dollar gym that they could use. And the storage is in the other section. You know, can't really address that. But the driveway has at least availability to park at least four average-sized cars, if not six, in the existing driveway without impeding anything. Again, having lived in the neighborhood for a long time, there is off-street parking up until the winter. Rule's going to affect, you can fit 10, 15, 20 cars on that street with no real adverse effect to the neighborhood. Because once those cars are parked, you know, the kids are gonna play in the road, or the kids are gonna play where they're gonna play no matter what. It shouldn't affect the children. I just feel that these places, I say it all the time, these are no longer homes, these are businesses. And making it convenient for transients, college rentals, whoever is transients to park versus the good of the neighborhood, I think I have to lean toward the neighborhood and say no.
Okay. Tony D., do you have any concerns?
Yes. Yeah, I do. Based on our visit yesterday and measurements taken and my personal observations, I think the existing driveway has enough room for six cars. And, you know, I believe the applicant said that there were only five, you know, rental residents. So, I think that's more than enough. Additional parking in the extended area is, I think, excessive. Would only be for transient people, visitors, you know, temporary. Would have no bearing on our winter laws of overnight parking. And I don't believe that there's any necessity to grant this variance.
Okay. Phyllis?
I like Christine and most concerned with the impact on the neighbor who has the parked cars shining the lights into the house. I think that's, it really negatively impacts the quality of the life of the people living in that home, and they've been there for a significant amount of time. That's it.
Okay. Diane?
Yeah, I mean, I have similar concerns. I mean, the light is really decreasing the quality of their life next door, clearly. And, I mean, the fact that this is going so close to the property line and oversized for what the zoning permits is exactly why zoning's in place, to protect the neighbor in the first place. So, I mean, I feel that in the wintertime, what happens, you can't park on the street, you go into the garage. So, even if the parking lot, if the driveway can't handle six, in the winter, maybe two have to go inside. But that's not zoning board's problem. So, yeah, that's my concern, and I don't understand why they would be permitted to expand the driveway.
Okay. Simona?
Just because I didn't get to do a site visit, it's a little unclear to me, has the driveway already been expanded?
Yes.
Or is it a request to further expand it?
No, it's already done.
It's already done. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. And Tony S.?
Well, I agree with pretty much everybody else who thinks the variance shouldn't be granted, you know, with particular concern for the impact on the neighbor with regard to the headlights and all the related stuff. So, I don't think it should be granted.
Okay. But I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. It appears based upon the testimony that, and site visits, that it appears that this is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. It would have an impact on, detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, there's certainly, he can limit the number of cars allowed on the property or utilize off-street parking. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. It is substantial. The existing driveway, although pre-existing, exceeds that allowed under the code, and this further extends that. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. Parking lot itself doesn't have any physical or environmental conditions. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is, but that's not a reason to deny it ordinarily. And I would make those findings. Tony D., do you mind making this motion? And I think that would make a motion to deny...
You want me to do it again?
He just did it.
Oh, did you? Okay, who's up next? Phyllis? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Do you want me to read it to deny, correct?
I think that that's what you do.
That's up to you.
Either way, but I think a motion to deny would probably be clean there.
Okay.
I think if you make a motion to deny based upon, you know, the typical language, I think that that would make sense.
Okay. I move that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So, moved.
Okay. Any discussion? You second that, right?
Yes. We can wait for the discussion.
Yes. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
If indeed the variance is denied, will the homeowner be required to break up and remove the asphalt that's there?
Yeah, and in fact, there are penalties for failure to comply, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there a specific...
Yeah, there's a specific amount of time. I have to look.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next is item number nine.
Wait, we have to vote.
All those in favor, all those in favor of denying item number eight.
Second.
No, I already seconded.
And Simona votes on this one?
And Simona votes on this one. So, all those in favor of denying application number eight signify by aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? All right, so that motion to deny passes. That brings us to number nine. So, this is a, oh, yeah, this is a front yard setback request requiring a five-foot variance for an addition. So, any comments upon this one?
I'm sorry, which?
Anyone have any concerns?
None.
None.
All right, then I would make, I would offer these. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This addition is no closer to the front line than the existing building. And in fact, as the addition continues on, it goes farther away from the front line. So, it's consistent with the neighborhood, and I don't see that it has any detriment to the nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon the positioning of the house, the way it is, there's no other way to do this. And whether the area, rested area variance is substantial, mathematically, not really, and in light of the fact that it doesn't encroach any more than the main building, no. And whether the proposed variance will have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, there are no physical or environmental impacts. And it is self-created in the sense that that's where the property's located, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Any discussion on this one? Okay, then, Phyllis did the last one. Who's up? Diane, do you mind doing this motion?
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So, move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? Anyone have any concerns? All right, then, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Okay. And Tony? I think that one was Tony. All those, any opposed?
Who's seconding?
All right, then that motion carries 7-0. Next is item number 10. This is a request for a two-and-a-half-foot variance to have, to allow a six-foot fence in a front lot, in a front lot, in a front yard. Anyone have any concerns about this one? Well, let me start with my concerns. Although fences in this property, in this neighborhood are not unusual, and in fact, there was a fence, a pre-existing fence on the property, because this is a corner lot, that six-foot fence is amazingly imposing and completely out of character with the neighborhood the way it's located now. Secondly, the applicant made an application indicating where they were going to put the fence. And whether they decided, whether that was a mistake, and they decided prior that they wanted to move it all the way closer to, had they indicated on their fence application that that's where they wanted to put the fence, it's likely they would have to come to us for approval because it's in the front lot. It's moved like 26 feet closer to the roadway. Based upon those two considerations, I would be disinclined to grant this variance. But I'm welcome to hear anybody else's comments.
Can we make suggestions for how, I mean, that if they shortened the width of the stretch, that they could bring it, put it, bring it in to where the other line was? Or is that not our business?
Here, I think that we just either grant, we could make conditions. I mean, we could say a five-foot fence, I suppose, or a four-foot fence, but I don't think there's any basis to do that. But where it's positioned, I don't, I don't think that's in our purview just because it's a front yard, and it could be, anywhere in the front yard requires a variance if it's more than three-and-a-half feet. I think that probably where the old fence was would not have required a variance based upon the maps.
Thirty feet back.
Was that?
Because it was 30 feet back.
Yeah, it was at least 30 feet back from the front lot line. I mean, if they wanted to have a three-and-a-half-foot fence, they would need a variance, although they said that that's, that would not accommodate what they wanted to do.
I think we've granted other six-foot fences, maybe that didn't look exactly like that, but on, you know, on a corner lot in that area. And when we did our site visit, we went back and forth a few times to see if the site, you know, when you got to the corner, if you couldn't see other cars coming.
Yeah, I don't think there's any visibility issue. I think I'm just, it's a stockade kind of castle sort of impact that bothers me and how this occurred in the first place.
Right. By just moving it 30 feet because they wanted a bigger yard.
Right.
That's not really a good reason.
It's a reason to ask.
Right, but they should...
Right.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. How far from the original permit to where the fence is existing, was the fence moved?
About 26 feet.
About 26 feet. Would we still be, would we still be here tonight if it was built on the original permit? I think yes.
No. No, it was more than, so long as it's more than 30 feet from the front lot line, they don't require a variance.
Okay, thank you.
Diane, you had a question?
So, if it was built according to the orig, if it was built according to the original permit plans, we would not be here tonight.
That's correct.
Correct. I approved the original plans, and then it was found that it wasn't built to plan when a final was done.
So, in the...
Thank you.
So, is the one in our packet the original or is it the new one?
That's not the original. The original was not submitted into your packet. That was a mistake.
That's a mistake?
The original was not...
It was a mistake not to include the...
Yes, you included the original, correct.
We typically don't include the building department files in packets. Maybe it's something we should...
Well, it was a zoning application, but usually something...
I think only because they allege that they had a building, that they had a fence permit would have been appropriate.
Yeah, in this case, it was, it wasn't built to plan.
Right. So, it may have or may not have, even if, even if it was mistakenly, my position would be, even if it was mistakenly granted, the fence permit was mistakenly granted, if they indicated where it was going to be, and it was mistakenly granted because there was, you know, it would have needed a variance, I would still have the same position. So, that...
Yes, if they came right after that and asked for this fence.
Right. Did that answer your question, Diane?
Yeah, yeah. But, so the original one would have been like here in the middle, over to here.
Let me see what you, what you're looking at here.
Where the gate is?
So, this could be reversed, but like where my pen, pen is, is the original was half of this...
Yes.
Yes, about halfway in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Roughly.
So, then I'm just confused, if we deny this, what is the repercussion? And, or if we accept, and if we have, that they have to go back to that original...
Yeah, they could build according to their building, to their fence permit.
Okay.
Simona, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, and Tony S., did you have any questions?
No.
Did I miss anyone?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, when you, I've never looked to get a fence permit. When you complete a fence permit, is there anything within that paperwork that talks about if you deviate from this plan, the approval is like null or void? Or if you deviate from it, you have to go back and get it re-approved? Is that clarified in any way?
I don't think it's, no, but I think it's implied that when you get a permit to do something, that that's what you have to do.
Okay.
I think. That's pretty reasonable. Do you mind if I close the shade in? That's in my eye.
Oh, yeah. All of a sudden, the sun came out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Bad for you.
All right, any other, Christine, did you comment?
I did comment, yeah.
And Art? You kind of.
I just have another comment or question. Sometimes, for other fences, people have, we've requested plantings to kind of break it up in some way and reduce the stockade effect, because that fence is imposing. Is, I don't recall if there's enough green space to do that.
I don't, I don't think it would survive.
Not running the salt.
Yeah.
Okay.
No removal.
What if they put the plantings in the front of it? At least on the, yeah, on the front part of the house? You don't?
That's not.
Oh, that's my part I'm concerned about.
Okay, all right.
It's the, whatever that name is, the name is Peacock or.
Peacock, right.
That part. And so I'm going to make the findings consistent with a denial. What would happen if?
Why don't you poll the board and see whether they're in the mood for denial or acceptance? And then if it appears that it's, would pass, then someone else can make those findings.
Who's up for, which alternate is up?
Oh, uh, Simona, yeah.
Okay. So for those on Zoom, raise your hands if you would be in favor of granting this variance. Okay. Then I think I can make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of a variance. This is, this particular fencing is out of character of the neighborhood. Other fences exist in the neighborhood, but not on a corner lot exposed to the roadway. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. A three-and-a-half-foot fence is allowed, however, the applicant says that doesn't satisfy what they require. This would be the only way for the applicant to achieve what they want to do. Whether the area variance require, whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is substantial. It's prohibited in the front yard. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. In this particular instance, I think that it would have a physical and environmental impact on the neighborhood in terms of site and the stockade offense that I think the zoning attempts to avoid. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. It certainly was self-created, and whether it was a mistake during the preparation of the fence permit or not, it certainly was self-created. And I would offer those findings. Who's up next for a motion?
I think Simona.
Was Diane?
Diane, I believe, yeah.
I just did.
Okay. Diane. Simona, do you mind? Simona's going to vote on this one, or she voted on the last one?
No, she's voting on this.
Okay, yeah, do you mind making this motion?
Sure.
This would be a motion, I think that this would be a motion.
A motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the board, that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item number 10. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor of denying this motion signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number 11, One Diane Court. This is also an application for a fence in the front yard, requiring a two-and-a-half-foot variance. This again is a corner lot along Taft Avenue, a busy roadway. There is a lot, there are a lot of trees and vegetation along that. Assuming that this passed, I would ask that some condition be made to maintain as much of that vegetation as possible. It would be a benefit both to the applicant and to the environment.
Isn't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Isn't this one where they said they are going to cut down some of the dead trees? Could we ask that they replant something?
Oh, okay.
Replant something in their place if they're on the outside of the fence? On the roadside of the fence?
Yeah.
I don't know.
If the fence is on the, the fence is on the roadside of the trees.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine. Any other concerns about this one?
You want something planted on there, the interior of the property?
Yeah.
No.
Right, I think you were saying two different things.
Actually, that most, I think the fence is going to go
Too close to the road?
Outside, outside the trees.
Oh, okay, never mind that.
You don't care about that, then?
No.
Okay.
My mistake, apologies.
All right, then I would offer these findings. Did anyone else have any concerns? All right, then, I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of a variance. It's not inconsistent with the neighborhood, and so I don't see any detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. Based upon, this is a, this is a corner lot, it requires, so it has two front yards. And one of the front yards is along a busy roadway. And so this is the only way to achieve privacy and security and noise reduction in that area. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it is in the sense that they're not allowed at all within the front yard line, but based upon the existing vegetation there, I think the impact will be minimal. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, there will be no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it was, but that's not a reason to deny this application. And I would offer those findings. So, any discussion, any concerns about this one? So Tony S., do you mind making this motion?
Okay. Okay, I moved that the variance requested for One Diane Court, six-foot fence be granted in accordance with the findings of the chair, the testimony of the applicants, and the site visits by the board members. So moved.
Okay, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, number 12 was adjourned, and I don't see any other business, so I would make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Then I'll see you next month, thank you very much.
Okay. Good night.
Good night.